All right. Call this meeting to order and we will start with the pledge of the flag.
Just move it some.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Scott.
Here.
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 I believe we've heard from Mr. Stack, he's had a personal situation come up and is unable to attend tonight. Do I hear a motion?
Most loathsome, Mr. Stack.
Second. Motion, DeDro, second Scott. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries. All right. Brings us to recommendations from admin, review of potential charter amendments. I think everybody's had a chance to read through what we brought forward and then we'll just go through them in a batch, mostly as lined out by, as outlined by Nathan's memo here, so we'll start with maybe one through five, then hit six, seven, eight, and nine. So, one through five, elections or post-election activity, as I think everybody knows, are, you know, state law, we used to do our own elections, state law has since consolidated both the dates and consolidated them with township. So this really, you know, these amendments get our, get our election process back in compliance with state law. The item number two, we've had this come up as an issue a couple times, the Monday meeting.
Yeah.
And, and one thing that I would say with that one is, it needs to be not the Wednesday after, but the, the second Wednesday after. So if the election's on a Tuesday, we need eight days between.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. President, there's something I would like to bring up as far as an election, I can do it now, or do you want to wait till you get through all this?
Might as well start now, I figured we'd, we'd kind of talk about the overalls and go in, but let's, let's start with overall items on elections.
Okay. I think when we have an election, and let's say we're putting four people on, and six people get petitions, and campaign, and run for the office, obviously two don't make it. Now, if for some reason, in the next segment, before the next election, if somebody leaves, either they quit, or family, or move, or something like that, then I think one of those two people, because they ran for office, they had the petition, they at least had 20 votes, that one of those would be, with the next highest votes, would be the next one in line. If they refused, or if there wasn't any, then we could go back to the same thing of looking for residents to do it. But I think it's, in a way, you're rewarding somebody for going through the effort of campaigning and getting all that done, and if they didn't make it, I would think logically, they should be the next one in line for it. And that's one of the changes I would like to see in here, instead of going through canvassing for somebody else, you know, and I think it's, since they go through that effort, whether they want it or not, then we would fall back on, you know, assigning somebody.
So Ed, I, I understand your point, and I think I understand what, what you want to do there. I think I would oppose that, that change, and the reason is that if we've had people run for the office, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, you know, if somebody, somebody runs, doesn't get on, we shouldn't look at them, bring them in, consider them, but if somebody runs for the office and the voters don't put them in among the top four, I think the voters may have had a reason. And I, I would not want to see us automatically bump people in based on, based on that criteria.
But when we do it as a council, the voters have no opinion, unless they come here and raise an opinion.
It, it comes right back to the voters in the next election, though. Whoever gets disappointed.
Yeah, the next election, obviously, they would have to run again. But let's say that we got one year into the election, and somebody left, then here's somebody who ran for office, got the 20 votes, maybe got more than that, but at least they had made an effort to get into it. When we do it where council picks them, the residents really don't have any input, other than if they come to a meeting and want to say something. And I think sometimes, depending on the makeup of the council, some, this, this could be a swaying factor to the way council does its business.
You know, obviously, it, it could be swaying one way or the other, but I, I think that, you know, putting somebody on who the voters clearly did not choose to elect is, is, you know, pretty clearly ignoring the will of, of the voters. I mean, that, I think that's, that's my, that's my concern, and I'm not saying that we haven't had people, you know, run for office, good, good people, and I know on occasion we've had people who have run, they've fallen short in the votes, they've come in and interviewed if we've had an opening and we've put them on. I, I would, you know, certainly encourage anybody who, who ran for council, didn't come on, didn't get on, to apply for it, and they're going to have to stand in the next election regardless. But I, I would be concerned that we would have somebody who has fallen below the threshold, and has fallen below the threshold for a reason. And I think we've had, you know, a few times over the years where I think voters have made a wise decision, and I would not want to see that, that automatically overturned by an opening. So that, that would really be my, my concern with that, with that.
Yeah, and in, in your example, Ed, that doesn't disallow those two from coming forward during the canvassing period.
No, I know, it doesn't. My, my, my whole point is, is that we're always talking about get involved, get involved, join this committee, join this, do this. So you get six people involved for four seats, and go through a campaign, and whether they lost by two votes or 22 votes, okay, you're done, goodbye. Now, if they want to come back, they might say, well, I didn't win it the first time, I'm not going to come back. You know, whether you're going to lose a good person or not, I just think that for going through that effort, I, I feel more comfortable having somebody like that take a place than for the group of six picking somebody. That's my opinion, if, I don't know if anybody else feels that way.
Council, council's pleasure here. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing substantial consensus to pursue it.
No. I mean, my personal, yeah, I think personally, that an individual who did lose, or two, they still have the right to come forward again.
Yeah.
And I think council would consider their appearance equally with anybody else that came forward that wasn't on the ballot.
I would hope so, we would. Or not being voted in, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my concern.
Yeah.
I would, I would encourage them to do so. I mean, I think, I think it's commend, I think anybody who puts themselves on the ballot anytime, I think it's commendable, and I think, you know, everybody who's been, everybody, everybody around this table knows it's not an easy process, it's, you know, it takes, it takes, it takes a lot of work, it takes, and losing elections is awful, it's terrible.
Sure.
But I think that's, you know, the will of voters, so.
Might have.
I guess for now, I don't, I don't see council consensus to pursue that sort of change.
Well, not part of the charter particularly.
But.
I said not as a part of a charter amendment, is what I think I proposed, right?
Yeah, that's what, that's what Ed was.
I think it would be a judicious thing for, let's say, the administrator to reach out to those, or.
I, I think for sure, yeah.
Say you ran, do you want to come forward?
Open any.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense.
That would be section, it would be a change to section 5.5 of the charter. That's what we were to do.
I think that's what we were hearing here.
Okay, well, anything else on elections in general, or shall?
Can I, sure. I just want to clarify, you had mentioned on proposal number two, which would do away with the Monday election, I just want to make sure that we're clear, so that when we go back to redraft, if you're thinking of a scenario where the election would be like November 7th, which would be the latest it could be.
Yeah.
And then our next regular meeting would be the very next day.
Yeah.
So we would need to write it up in a way that would verify that we would have at least eight days between.
How about the terms of office of council persons shall commence at the time set for the beginning of the next scheduled regular council meeting, which is at least eight days following the election at which they are elected.
Yeah.
So we could just add in that, which is at least eight days, is that, is that eight?
It would be, because it would be a, it would be a Wednesday night meeting after a Tuesday election.
Yep.
So that would be right.
So, no, no, well, yeah, wait a minute here now. What if it was a Monday?
It, it.
Well, they're always going to be.
The elections are always on Tuesdays. Elections are, elections are always on the first Tuesday following the first Monday, so it would be on the second Wednesday following the first Tuesday following the first Monday.
Are you taking notes?
I'm hoping that's at least eight days.
Well, if you, if you put in there the next regular scheduled, and it happens to be later, is that going to flip to the next month?
Can we just do, yeah, that's what I would be.
Oh, that's true.
Can we just do it on, on the Wednesday, eight days after the election?
And that would, that would be.
That would, that would make sense.
Be on the Wednesday.
Yep.
And it'll just be the Wednesday, eight days after.
Could be the third Wednesday.
It could end up being the third.
So be it.
Wait, will there always be, dummy me here, will there always be a Wednesday, eight days after Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Unless something really drastic happens, and then we won't have to worry.
First Tuesday following the first Monday.
CD council will be the least of our problems.
So, it'll be.
Yeah, so on the Wednesday, eight days after.
So you'll just have to, when you set your regular meetings, you should just be aware that there's, of election years, that you set that.
And it'll be like once every seven years or whatever, when we get that one oddity.
I ask one other, just one other topic here. One of the issues we had last year was that the township did not finish their election canvas by the time of our Monday meeting, and so we had unofficial results to go on, but no official results, and it didn't really matter last year because we had no contested races. But, I'm, and we don't really control the canvas of the votes, but my concern is if, if we had a contested race, and the township hasn't certified the official results by that Wednesday, should we have something written in here that would bounce that back a little bit? Because I'm worried that that's going to become a normal thing, that we don't have official results in time for that Wednesday meeting.
I think you're right, and I think if they, if they don't have it going forward, if there's not, if, if the canvas isn't certified, I don't think we can seat a council.
Right. And like, like last year, it was, we knew nobody else ran, so it didn't really factor into play much, and Jennifer and I spoke about it last year, but if we had a contested race, and the unofficial results showed a tight race.
We're doing a recount or something, yeah.
Then, and you know what, this is new to me, because I know here it's common that you take office right away. I'm used to taking office in January where I'm from, and so I don't, I don't want to complicate it more, but I'm just trying to envision a scenario where we're required, where we shall appoint someone, or have their terms start, but we may not have official results for an election.
Can we get a situation where we have the, the, the results certified for like three of the four, and they're doing a recount on somebody, or if they, if it's a recount, just nothing gets certified?
I don't know if that tells you the truth, what, whether they certify certain.
So like if we had, if we had, or, you know, the.
I tell you, that, that happened to me. The one time I wasn't reelected, that three of them were brought in, and they were doing the recount, so, see, I can't remember if.
But I'm wondering if the whole, if the whole election was actually certified or not? If they had, you know, certified the election.
I thought it was just for the one, because everything else was voted in, but there was, it was a matter of six votes.
Is there a problem bumping, bumping that appointment back a month?
Any, if you certify, though, if you're going from the whole pot of.
Yeah, you're going from the whole pot, so I, I think you can't certify that election until, until it's, until it's sorted, in which case, should, do we need a clause to say, you know?
Could we have the term commence at the next regular meeting, after which the results have been certified?
Yeah.
Or is there a reason why we have to, have to seat a council in November?
No, that's up to us.
I mean, could we see it?
Up to the voters.
No, December.
Seated in December.
I mean, we'd be sure that the, the election's certified by then.
Realistically, if we do what I just said, it probably does mean they won't start till December.
Right.
If last year's any indication, because we didn't get the results until the November 20 something.
Then we can just stick with our regular Wednesday, and just, just seat people on the December.
Seat people in December.
Mm-hmm.
The first meeting in December.
First meeting in December.
So just council persons, the terms of office shall commence at the first regularly scheduled meeting in December?
In December.
Yeah, and then the, the term.
They wouldn't have the eight day thing, we'd have to worry about that.
And the term would be expiring the first, yeah, meeting in December.
December to December.
December to December.
Okay, yeah, that makes it more, more.
I think that makes it a lot cleaner, yeah.
Because that eight day thing is, you can't find any indication, it's all confusing.
No, we, we discussed it in admin, and it was confusing amongst us at the time, so. I like, I like this a lot, but it's just better.
So change that, on section 3.5, and we're, the last sentence, then basically, the terms of office, council person shall commence at the time set for the beginning of the next scheduled regular council meeting to be held in December?
Yep.
Of each year.
Yeah, they push that to January. I think, I think Wixons, I think they seat their council hands.
Yeah, I had January, but it goes on a calendar that way.
Because I know they aren't required to start canvassing, which seems odd to me, but whatever, that's the way the law is, for five days.
Yeah, which I think is how we got to that situation in the last, in the last one.
So they don't start right off, so.
We're only two precincts, so nothing should last very long, but, so I can't imagine we'd go longer than a month, but.
Okay, so that simplifies it then, we'll just do that, the beginning in December.
Good change. Anything else on the terms of office?
I'll just point out one little thing on proposal number three, I, I'll write out the time, just in case you want to ever change the time of your, oh, I guess that was a proposal we were just discussing, I just said at the time for when it's set to begin versus, we had 7:30 in there before.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 7:30 PM.
Oh, good, that's, that's useful, too.
Yeah, so that way if you switch your times, that's not an issue.
So the.
So we're changing that to seven?
No, I think we're taking, we're taking the, the hour, the time out of it, right?
Yeah, we're just saying at the time scheduled for the beginning of the next, so however you guys, wherever you.
For scheduling at seven. It's, it, we don't have to do a charter amendment to change from seven to 7:30 or whatever.
Exactly.
Propposal number four, approval of petitions. Anybody, anything there? Number five, I think is pretty straightforward. All right, so I think that takes care of one through five, which is the election stuff. So six is, is council compensation, which has been into the charter, which makes it difficult to update or change. This is one where, in particular, the admin committee wanted input from council. What we eventually came to was, was having, you know, kind of, having the creation of a, of a compensation committee that would then make a recommendation, council could vote it in, it wouldn't take effect till the next election. There are lots of alternatives out there, one of which is for, you know, councils to just put any change directly on, on the ballot, to then take effect afterwards. The, the thing we wanted to avoid was the situation that we've had, where that gets put into the, into the charter, and then it sits essentially forever. So we end up with a, with a pay rate that is now however many years old, 30 years old or 40 years old. And we also wanted to, you know, obviously not have, council just sits and comes up with a number at their, at their whimsy and puts it in. So, so that seemed a reasonable, a reasonable way to go, it happens in a lot of places, it's, you know, you point, you point out. It's, you know, you point, you point a compensation committee, they make a recommendation, it goes to council, council holds, holds a, you know, public hearing, makes a vote, and then everybody gets a chance to vote on that ex-council before it takes, it takes effect. Sound reasonable to everybody then?
You get public input that way because it's an ordinance as well, so you are not, it's not like you're doing it behind closed doors or anything like that.
Council would have the flexibility to appoint a committee anytime they saw that there's no timeframe written in this that it has to happen every certain number of years, so as it became a need, you have the flexibility to appoint the committee.
Yeah, we.
The only key is that under state law, you cannot change the compensation during the terms of.
The sitting council.
Correct.
Right.
So this, this panel would be all members from council?
No, it would be a citizen committee.
Oh, okay.
The, it, we could potentially have some council members, some citizens.
Two and two, two and three.
Two and three, something like that. I wouldn't want it to be a majority council, so. One other thing that we did discuss in terms of timing of this was maybe putting in just an automatic trigger so that it happens like, you know, the year following the certification of the census, which is a pretty good time to do it, I think. Then it happens, you know, once every 10 years and it doesn't, again, it does, it just doesn't linger forever. And I think, as I say it out loud, I think I'd kinda like to see us do that, just to have some sort of trigger in there.
Well, yeah, we have the flexibility of doing whatever we want.
We have the flexibility of doing it whenever we want.
Yeah.
The problem with the trigger is then it takes away, if something.
Yeah, that's true.
Extraordinary comes up that you feel like you wanna do it sooner, then you're kind of limited.
Okay, I'll go with that, I'll go with that, we'll just have it as a, as a trigger.
Do we need to specify any racial, that the, that the outside commission shall have a minimum of three members of the public, or be a member of, a five-member committee?
That might be, that might be a good idea, two council members and three members of the public.
Just so it doesn't look like, yeah, I mean, it's specified or something, I don't know what you think about that.
Yeah, all it says is just, it'll be a committee of five, but there's no breakdown over those five.
Three of which must be members of the public, residents of the community, I don't. I mean, that's.
I think, I think that's a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Just to prevent the majority, the sense that we're doing a majority issue in here.
Residents, not just anybody can. Two from council, obviously, are residents, but yeah, the three residents.
Qualified voters of the village, I think is.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, that way qualified.
That could also leave the door open for one of the members being someone from the MML. Maybe you wanna have an expert come in on municipal compensation. Does that be possible, or does that have to be?
I, I think I'd want an expert to come in and testify, I don't think I'd want them to be part of the treasure.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, when, when, when we went through it, we went through a, a whole series of looking at, you know, comparable villages. We've got a lot of that information if we, if we, if we do one. So it's, it's pretty straightforward to gather that information and give them some reasonable basis for recommendations.
So three qualified voters of the village who are not elected.
But not members of council, I mean.
Yeah.
Probably not if they're a member of a board or something, I mean, that.
There's still not elected.
No, we've counseled.
Oh, okay.
You're not elected.
Not elected, you're right, you're correct.
Appointed.
Yeah, we're saying not members of council.
Not members of council. Number seven, I think is pretty straightforward, and it's that the, the courts have struck down the two-year requirement, but said a one-year requirement is okay, so it reduces our requirement from two years to one year.
Only thing I might change on that, and I wanna discuss that with Jennifer a little further, maybe look into a little further, I just might remove the, the very end in accordance with Michigan case law. Like, kinda, that's more for the public, kind, you know, to be aware of why you're doing that. But I don't know if that's really, I might remove that language, if that's not an issue with anyone.
Change the requirement to one year period?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Because it's not, it's a little different than statute, you know, it's just kind of court interpretation.
It's a little, it's potentially confusing to people.
Yeah, yeah. So I might just, I think I might remove that part.
All right, anybody else on seven? Number eight, Mr. Countec, I believe this is yours.
Well, no, this is my first chance to offer some input, and I would like to do that. First of all, from one standpoint, I do not believe that state law requires that the due date is September 15th or 14th, or whatever that coincidental date is with Commerce Township. There is some old general village law that dates back to the 1890s that addresses that, but I don't think it's applicable, and I don't think our due date is, which is currently August 31st, as you know. I don't think that there's been a subsequent change in the law from when this was first adopted, if it was, say, 1954 or something like that. That puts us out of whack. Milford Village, for example, is due August 31st or September 1st. Lake Orion and Beverly Hills are due September 15th. Oxford is due August the 31st, so there's no mass movement, I don't think, anyway, to comply with a September 15th due date. So my first query concerns, you know, the state of the law there, and I, I don't think it's, it's required by the law. Now, let me just raise some other points. From a practical standpoint, it's one of those issues, like be careful what you wish for. Yeah, we've had some feedback, not very many make it to me, and I was asking the ladies about that as recently as today, about people who have a mindset that, hey, if Commerce's bill do, if Commerce's bills do September 14th, so must or so should, or in my mind, yours is too. It happens, I'm not gonna deny that. One of my fears is that come September 15th, you know, let's say we extend the due date. It's not a question of cash flow, we can handle it, but it's a question really of, people are gonna make mistakes. They're gonna send Commerce's bill to us with the wrong amount on it. People are gonna send our bill to Commerce with the wrong amount on it. Lots of things can happen on September 14th with, with, with the coincidental due dates. The problem is going to be that on that date, if the tax is not paid, I hate to, I hate to be the bearer of, of, of bad tidings, but that technically means their past due. State law, one thing I am certain of, state law requires the governing body to do the interest forgiveness, and I don't think you want a parade of people up here saying, hey, the treasurer's a nasty guy, he wouldn't do it, so I'm appealing to you, because I will be a nasty guy, and, and because.
And that's your job.
In, in a way it is, yeah. I don't wanna be in the position of, yeah, you're, you're okay, you're forgiven, and all the rest of that. We do have some latitude in that regard anyway, because, you know, I'll take a postmark, other places don't, they're, you know, the divergence is all over the board. But just so council, I just want to raise some discussion points here. If I send out 1,900 bills a year, probably 800 plus minus are going to be paid by banks or mortgage companies. There are large servicing companies now that handle that. So for example, probably one of them's gonna handle 75% of those. The other two are gonna take care of, you know, 90% of them, there's only a couple places, like, I mean, nobody, you, you think Chase is gonna send us a check or all the rest of that, they go through these servicing companies. Nobody's got a problem with the due date, they're never late, they know what their, what, what the due dates are, that's their job to do that. So I have 1,100 direct payers of that 1,100. You know, most of them are informed, most of them have been around the block a few times, that, you know, but granted, there's turnover year over year. But where I'm going with this is that, you know, I, I think, I should've brought a copy of the tax bill, but it's pretty apparent on there, I mean, it's, it's all in different colors and stuff like that. It's, it's pretty obvious that there's an August 31st due date. One of the problems I have with the amendment as, as written also is that it calls, it seems to, if I read it correctly, it calls for a 2% penalty to be, penalty to be imposed on September the 14th, and an additional half percent at that point in time. They call it, you're calling it a collection fee, okay, for lack, a, a collection fee is still a, an interest penalty, as far as I'm concerned. The, the old state law refers to it as, as a collection fee, but what it really is is a penalty. But the point of that is, that's it, according to the way I read it. In other words, right now, if you don't pay by August 31st, you get a 2% penalty for the month of September. After that, October, November, December, there's a half percent per month, per month, per month. And it goes up to, the maximum you can pay is 3.5%, because that's the end of the line, at the end of February. I can't collect taxes anymore, I'm enjoined from doing that by law. So this to me creates a disincentive for anybody to pay. It's like, well, I got my penalty on September 15th by 2.5%, why would I wanna pay it until February? And that I think is, is, is not a good thing. We do make it a point, by the way, toward the end of the tax collection year, in January or February, to send out on notice to any village taxpayers who have an unpaid village tax bill or portion thereof, let's say they tried to sneak it in and paid late and, and didn't include the interest or something like that. So we, we're, we're trying to keep people informed, it's not a question of chicanery or a question of, you know, trying to pull a fast one. The information, I mean, we're trying to keep people informed. Now granted, that's not according to charter or anything like that, it's a policy we started, you know, probably around the time I first got here. So those are thoughts at large, and I guess I'm sort of ambivalent about it. I don't know that a change is, to summarize, I don't know that a change is required by law as a matter of policy, does it make sense? I've given you some considerations.
So, so I, you know, my recollection is that we went down this path because the notion was it would be more convenient for people to get to the same collection day as, as Commerce. I don't think I'm hearing that from you, that it's not.
Not from me, but, but, you know.
And I, I have, I have no perspective on that, because I go through an escrow company, so, so I'm not, I'm not an individual, individual payer, so.
The village, just says, something else is the village of Milford. Their clerk told me that the township, unless I misunderstood, the township does everything for them, so.
Well, I just looked on their website, and they said that their bills do September 1st, so. Some, there's some disconnect somewhere.
She's saying the township collects, does it all, so I don't know if they collect the different dates maybe for that.
Oh, that could be. I'm pretty sure the same thing is true in Beverly Hills, but they made theirs coincident with, in their case, Southfield Township.
And this, what I, what's on here is just a throwing out, you know, I'm definitely no expert on the, that portion, but just to give an idea with trying to line it up, as an option to line it up, so this is definitely not anything that I would recommend per se.
Counsel's pleasure, if my treasurer is telling me that her process is okay.
Food for thought, gentlemen and ladies, it just.
Do you have a strong recommendation?
Well, see, that's just, I, I'm ambivalent about it, I mean, I.
I hear that.
But what's your, what's your real opinion? What do you really think? Come on, tell us. Truth or consequences? You know, state, what advantage to the change before I grant you ambivalence?
Well, the advantage, of course, would be, you know, people are, might be less forgetful in, in a few cases, but really, if the crux of the matter is whether to, to have a coincidental due date or not have a coincidental due date on the basis of convenience, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we need to.
Has what we've had worked good?
Well, I think that's what I'm saying, if anything's broken, don't fix it.
Don't fix it, if it's not broken.
I could point to some other things in charters that I think could be fixed with this.
I don't think you wanted to say it.
You don't wanna.
Yeah, well, make a decision, we do, so we.
I, so I, I think, well, we're, we're kinda gathering, gathering consensus here. I, I, I don't, I don't feel a strong need to do number eight if, if what we have now is fine with everybody.
Agreed.
Yeah, particularly if that many residents as a percentage of the overall taxpayers are doing it by their own account, their own responsibility, they're used to a date, so why, why flip them another day?
Well, new people, you know, it, it is pretty confusing when you move into the village, and some people maybe are unawares of the fact that there's, there's three tax bills a year, so the two usually get somebody or an additional one or something. Now, I have heard that, so.
He says you're gonna have to take the heat.
I don't think we're gonna fix that.
No.
Okay, so I, I think, I think what, what I've got consensus here is let's drop number eight.
Okay, that was easy. Well, maybe not easy.
So number nine is purchase and sale of property. This is where, you know, the amount was written into the, the ordinance. It's made it difficult as, you know, increasingly small pieces of, of equipment or gear have to come back to council and then go out to a public auction. We'd like to be able to dispose of things a little bit more, more quickly. The, you know, it would allow us to do, instead of do, instead of doing it through the charter, we just do a resolution, we can change it with a law, so.
Makes sense.
All right, so what I hear is we do one through five on the elections, but we just start the terms on first meeting in December. That eliminates some of the confusion that we had in there. Oh, and also make the, but yeah, and make the change to all Wednesdays instead of that Monday meeting, which confuses all of us all the time. Six, we wanna clarify that a majority of that, that boarders are, you know, non-council qualified voters. Seven, we're good with, but we just blocked off a little bit at the end of the language. And eight, no more, eight we're not, we won't do, and nine, we're good with. So I think if that's what we've got, we can give this back to LeAnn, she can clear up, as we've said. We can bring it back to the full council meeting in December. At that point, we also have one other, one other item, which is, so it needs to go on the, it needs to be out in, in public for 30 days before we can do it. We have a short, we have only four weeks between our December meeting and our January meeting, so.
So it's not 30 days?
So it's 28 days.
Ah.
Which means that if we want to get it, and I think we would like to be able to send it to the governor by January, we may have to do a very brief special meeting to, like on the fifth, fifth Wednesday of November, or, yeah, I think that's probably the best date for it. I'm open to other suggestions, but, but if we need to get the 30 days, I think we need to get the 30 days, and I don't think we wanna let it linger.
You know, no. Getting it, and February is a death, you know, death knell. I'm quicker, the more comfortable you can be, the better, I guess. It's not too much trouble for you guys to have that special meeting.
I think that we would have to have all this to be certified of the ballot in August, I think it is, right? The 15th Tuesday before the election.
Right.
And they usually say to give six months for the different levels of review, this all goes to the state, to the governor. We could probably do what you just announced, we could probably also do a, a January work session or a special meeting and still be well within the timeframe, but, because that'd give us from January to August to have all the reviews if there's some hesitancy about meeting second half of November. But I think we'd probably be okay as long as we did something before we got to February.
I see what you're saying, have the special meeting after the regular.
Well, we would, we, we would have.
Do it in, in what would normally be our January work session, so the fourth Wednesday or something like that. But then, then we're practically to February.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, so.
We just have to squeeze in a special meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's conducive for, you know, we're talking about sit down here, go Heidi Hoody, Heidi Ho, and out the door.
Everybody look over, are we good, let's put them on the table, and boom, we come back and talk about it.
That's the fastest five bucks we're gonna make.
Yeah. So I think, I think that's probably the, I think that's, that's the easiest, cleanest thing to do.
So, so we would have a special meeting to pass our resolution that these are what we wanna do.
Yeah.
And then that would authorize us to do the, to have the 30-day clock, so we get in this final column, we would fill in the website, do all the things we need to do, and then we would come back, come after that, and actually pass.
At the next regular meeting, you would actually pass or approve the residents.
What, what month are you looking at, January or February for another meeting, especially?
It, it would be actually November, it would be the November 30th, the fifth, the fifth. Or.
This, mm-hmm, this month.
Yeah, this month.
To raise it so the 30 days could run and be done by January.
I know, you could just start, start the clock then.
Could that be a, a scheduling problem for, I know it could be.
Could be for a couple of us, depending how the 15th, 16th, and 17th work out.
Your season ends eventually.
I won't be here, you should be here.
I should be here.
You should be here.
I'll be here.
You should be.
Pick, pick another date if we want.
Yeah.
That seemed, that seemed the easiest. That seemed, that seemed the easiest.
I think, I think, well, I think we'll have, we'll have a forum and I think all we need is a forum, we're really just starting.
I might be out of the country.
Yeah, August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, so. So, I mean.
So, what, well, we got, we got two. Do you got, do you got a date you want to throw down, did you say November?
Yeah, I was saying November thirtieth.
Who are you?
Actually, no, it's November twenty ninth, it's, it's the, it's just one example, we've got that. Two weeks, two weeks from today. No, wait, three weeks from today, sorry.
Three weeks from Thanksgiving.
We could also, for, I mean, you know, uh, what, what did we end up with for the appreciation dinner of the seventh?
The seventh, yeah.
We could do some, we could do something that evening before we start up there.
Yeah. It would be a very short meeting.
Yeah.
Conceivably.
Do it here and then go over to the appreciation there.
Well, just go to the bar and do it there and then come back.
Much though I appreciate the idea, and I believe we would be within the Open Meetings Act, I think for something like charter review, I'd, I'd assume make sure all the meetings are here in the chamber.
Yeah, that'll work, that'd work better.
Yeah, let's do that.
Oh, do you?
I'll be in Costa Rica.
I'll be in Hawaii.
And you'll be in Hawaii? Well, you still have a court.
So we're, so we're still, we're still just, just, just two then, so.
Yeah.
It's probably more convenient to do it that night though, because we all.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
How, what time is the appreciation dinner starting?
Seven P M.
Seven P M, so.
What does?
It does.
Yeah, that, that gives us thirty.
So, me here, like, uh.
Six?
Me here at six.
Okay.
December seventh. So I think, really, I think really at that point, we'll look them over, we'll see if there's anything, anything that really does need to be changed, but we should have, you know, writ, written motion, that the language around it is a bit technical, so we're not going to change that, and we'll just look it over, review, you know, motion to put on the table, you know, motion to table, um, and then we will. Oh, so this is, in theory, when we table, I think we're supposed to pick it up at the next scheduled meeting, but I think we could table for thirty days or.
Oh, which will be the thirteenth.
What about a motion to postpone, Mr. President, would that work?
That's slightly different than.
And the stupid language says we have to table it, I, I totally get what you're saying, because I'd assume postpone it, I think, I think we're okay, but I think if we pick it up, we can pick it up from the table at the next one and then put it back down on the table.
Yeah, yeah, that would still, it would be an agenda item, we just wouldn't take any action on it, other than to.
Yeah, but let's just make sure we do that so it doesn't, it doesn't inadvertently expire and then we have to start the, the clock ticking again.
And Leanne, just so I'm clear, at that meeting that we're planning for December seventh, if I'm reading the process correctly, we have to have a motion and a second and then we stop.
Right.
So there's no vote, there's a motion, a second, so that it's officially on the table for consideration.
Correct.
But then we won't vote on it until the meeting thirty some days after.
Correct, yeah.
We'll make sure we have that spelled out for everyone, so we.
Let's spell that out.
Yeah, it's state law.
I thought we needed to do a motion to table then, we get the motion, we get the second, then we do a motion to table, we vote to table it.
Yeah, it, um, resolution offered by someone, seconded by someone and thereafter tabled by council.
Okay, yeah, so tabled by council is when we do the motion to table.
I just wanted to verify that it'll be different to do a motion in a second and not take a vote, but we are not to take a vote.
We are not to take a vote, please don't vote.
We'll, uh, we'll make sure we have the process, uh, well, well-defined, um, at that meeting.
All right, anybody else, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion seconded, further discussion, all in favor? Special meeting.